Good evening, everybody, and I call tonight's Library Board of Trustees meeting to order on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P. M. for the Lake Bluff Public Library Board of Trustees. Excuse me, seven oh-two. My apologies, Janie. All right. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay. I will go ahead and take roll call. Excuse me. Um, I'll just go on my screen here, who I see first. Trustee Meyerhoff.
I hear.
Trustee Heitzelmann.
Here.
Trustee George.
Here.
Trustee Graziano.
Here.
Thank you very much, and we do have a quorum. Are there any members of the public who would wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, um, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from two thousand twenty-three's March twenty-first meeting. I'm gonna scroll down here in our agenda. Hold this up. So our packet is here for you. Oh, here comes Matt. Welcome, Matt. We're just getting started with the approval of the minutes from the board meeting from Tuesday, March twenty-first.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Apologize I'm late. I had another call run over.
That's okay. Thank you. Do we have any edits or changes to the minutes?
There was one part where I think it was the communications team where Katie was mentioned, but it's me.
Yes, correct, Martha. I saw that, too. So Janie, second bullet in the director's report with Chapman and O'Hara. Courtney.
I'm sorry. Okay, with Chapman and replace corner with O'Hara.
Any other changes or edits to the minutes from March twenty-first meeting? If no other changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-first board meeting?
Move to approve.
Who was that?
John.
Oh, hi, John. Thank you. Um, for, um, do I have a second?
I'll second, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the minutes of the March twenty-first board meeting have been approved. Thank you all. The next item in the agenda is the director's report, but the first item in the director's report agenda is recognition of trustee Meyerhoff and trustee Heitzelmann. I wish we were in person today, but we, I'd like to formally invite both of you to attend our in-person board meeting, which is scheduled Tuesday, May sixteenth, for a proper felt farewell and recognition. We will be meeting at six thirty. I think I put in a previous email, six forty-five. The start time of that will be six thirty. We'll be meeting in the spruce room. There will be light refreshments and time to chat and mingle. And this is really a time to acknowledge the years of service and leadership trustee Heitzelmann and trustee Meyerhoff you have given to the Lake Bluff Public Library. So thank you so much. There will be a brief presentation at the beginning of that board meeting, which we hope you'll be able to stay for. Um, but after the presentation, you're welcome to leave. You do not need to stay through the whole board meeting anymore. Um.
Yeah, Kathy deserves four times the thanks. She gets, she deserves four times the thanks that I.
Oh. I think the whole board deserves all the thanks, really.
Well, and it'll just be a great time for all of us to get together in person. I know those opportunities have been few and far between as this board is a board, and staff will be there. I'm really looking forward to returning and well, being in person with all of you. So I.
I think that will be the first time this board has all been together since.
I agree.
Since we had all this actual board, so.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, before we do the formal presentation and resolution reading in May, would any other trustee like to share their words of of thanks and recognition with Kathy and John?
Well, I certainly would. I think, John, you were incredibly helpful in coming on board and helping us with, even before you were a board member, with helping us with your your consulting firm in our fundraising efforts and helping us to get the the foundation going. And so I I don't know, I think John is probably the one person I've known on this board more than or longer than anybody else. It's just been nice to work with you in a somewhat professional capacity. So thank you so much for everything you've done for us. And Kathy, you were the reason I came on the board in the first place. So, um, you know, I just, I have thoroughly enjoyed your leadership. We don't always agree on everything, but that's as it should be. And you know, or you're going to be so missed. I can't even tell you. Don't be surprised about getting phone calls occasionally and saying, Kathy. What about this? What about that? It'll happen.
Thank you, Janie. That's sweet.
Thank you, Janie. Anyone else?
I'll just say something quickly. Um, you know, obviously, my tenure is probably, I think, the shortest maybe with 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 Jenny and with Bonnie. But, um, you know, in that time, both of you have been influential, both in expediting my entrance to the board as well as being a trusted resource as we got into our sort of functional roles and and Kathy as the as the president. So, um, you know, Kathy, very gracious and thoughtful and in sort of helping me along and setting expectations and 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 meeting, even meeting with me individually. And John, your your advice and wisdom on the fundraising as well as the legal backdrop has been indispensable. And I'm going to miss seeing you all at least on a monthly cadence, if not, if not more frequently. So, thank you.
Sure.
And thank you and congratulations to Janie for winning reelection as well.
Such a struggle.
Well, Matt, I'll tell you, last spring, he was nice. Man, it was nice. Up until the one we just got together for a couple of probably, we'd been working closely over Zoom for so long. So I met him and I I don't want to embarrass you, Matt, but my first recommendation was to get up and give you a big hug. Wait, I've never even seen this person before. What if it's, what if it's a look-alike, you know, and I'm hugging the wrong man or something? So I I do feel, you know, great friendship to Bonnie and Matt and Jenny for coming on board in a really difficult time. That was not easy for you to step out. And you've just done, you know, a fabulous job. I'll say it now. I'll say it next month as well. I think this board is the most successful board I've ever served on in any capacity anywhere because we just get along so well and like-minded and as Janie said, we agree and we don't just, and we don't agree. That doesn't make any difference. We're working hard for the library. And, um, just, you know, worried about all the things we worried about the last few years, but with the library first for an hour and a half, you know, Tuesday nights in the in the in the middle of the winters and springs and so forth. So, thank you all, just just for everybody. And good luck to you. You've really got a great group of people to be working with.
I ran into Bill at the library on Saturday. He was much taller than I envisioned. Yes.
Oh, thank you all. Any other last words before we close?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you. I know, um, I feel like there have been a number of challenges that have presented themselves in the time that I've been on the board, and it's really been wonderful to see the way both of you have gracefully helped lead us through some really difficult times. And so I just want to say thank you. I've really learned a lot from working with both of you, and I really appreciate all you've done. And I admire all the work you've done. I think it's so wonderful, um, the space that you're leaving us in. So I were sad to see you go, but I'm so happy for you. Kathy, I hope you get to go out and golf with everybody. I know your husband has really been looking forward to what's happening. So, yes, thank you for all of your hard work. We really are.
Thank you, Janie.
Thank you.
My formal words will come in May, um, but just wanted to say, uh, thank you both so much. I just really appreciated, uh, the intentional, uh, interview questions that both Kathy and John asked during their my interviewing here. I remember them very well, um, and I was very impressed with this library, just based on their my initial interactions with you, John, and with you, Kathy. And I really appreciate the mentorship and the guidance that I've received in my first four very busy, fun months. Your support has been incredible. I wouldn't have been able to survive without all of you. But especially the two of you. So thank you so much. So again, formal words, uh, get ready for more recognition and celebration next month. But for now, I just wanted to take the time in your last formal board meeting.
Thank you.
So thank you, John, and thank you, Kathy.
Yay.
Well said.
All right. Thank you all. With that, I'd like to move on to the director's report. So you will continue to see this format used month to month. Um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, um, this is aligned with the library's priorities, but also the structure of the library trustee committees, so that you can see the work that the library has done to support the various areas of emphasis our board is structured around. We will be including professional development and training among staff in these reports, too. There were a couple of examples this month. Um, going forward in the new fiscal year, we'll keep track of number of hours that staff have acquired and accomplished training and education in their professional development. So that's something you will look forward to seeing. In terms of the actual report itself, um, I just want to acknowledge the managers on the call who have been very busy with performance reviews. Um, and that we are trying to align, just like we are Jenny and I working together to align our process with my review and and my timeline for the review with the fiscal year. We created a schedule several months ago to align the staff review process with the approval of the raises, the writing and the approval of the evaluations by the director, and then the actual meeting. So staff now are meeting with their managers before May first even starts, so they know what raise to expect. It'll go into effect May first. They'll know about it, and they will know what their goals are as of May first into the new fiscal year. So, um, I think this is some really great process improvement. I just want to acknowledge the the managers on the call for all their work with that. Um, I think a really strong highlight of the library in this last month is our social media, specifically in building, but also online, our support of transgender day of visibility. Um, I hope you've gotten a chance to read the wonderful comments we received from patrons on our social media channel channels. It was very important for us at the library to highlight books of transgender authors and talking about stories, elevating transgender voices, and it was really heartwarming to see our community show such support. And it's just another indication of our community's support of the right to read, intellectual freedom, and the diverse array of stories and perspectives that we have in this community. So I wanted to share that as a highlight. You will see more technology updates for the library coming soon and in future reports. I'm looking forward to in the new fiscal year, bringing the technology group together. Um, we've honed Martha's job description as she's now the adult services and technology manager and are working to bring all of the technologies that relate to that management. So filling in where some of Lindy's position left off and just kind of streamlining that process and that role. But also working with the other managers when the technology comes up. Um, so for example, Sierra, our online catalog, um, we have some upgrades to be doing on our encore, which is this, the patron discovery layer, what they experience searching the books in our computer. We've had some back end work that we've needed to do, and so we're going to continue focusing on that in the next couple of months. We're a little behind, but we knew that coming into me coming into this job. So we're trying to update and get back to a regular process of work and updates in that area. We're really excited that our seed library is back for all of you with green thumbs. Um, we've seen a fantastic response in both our mail and in-person distribution of seeds. And I just want to acknowledge Jillian Chapman and all the staff members that have, uh, supported the launch, the relaunch of the seed library. We're actually supporting a preschool event this Saturday at the Park District, providing a a small array of seeds for preschoolers and their families to participate in in an activity. Thank you, Jenny, for helping create that opportunity. And I'm really excited about a brand new. Well, I don't know if it's brand new. I'll have to ask Jill and Eliza here, but the garden task force, it's an all ages intergenerational group dedicated to gardening and learning about gardening. You don't have to be a novice. You can definitely be a beginner level gardener, but the idea is to look for, to teach and to engage in the learning garden. Um, and we've had some fantastic participants already that will continue throughout the summer. So, um, for those of you that know anybody or might be interested yourself, um, the garden task force is a great outreach and program that Jill and Eliza helped put together. I think a lot of you know what's been going on with the building and maintenance. You've heard these updates from me before. Um, but it is really interesting seeing it in writing, seeing it all put together there. Um, so I will continue to do these updates for you so you know what's going on with the building. Um, the highlight is, of course, the hot water heater, which was replaced on March twenty-ninth. And then I just wanted to share, I know Kathy emailed me about, um, the information from the state government in terms of the delays that we're experiencing about passport processing. And I will tell you, staff and certainly Katie and other managers are hearing about it daily, um, multiple times a day. And we've had interactions with patrons who have experienced those delays. Um, and so we are really as transparent and communicative with them as possible to let them know what the state is experiencing. Um, since we're kind of that middle liaison, we can't, we're not the ones dictating the processing time, but Anna helped create a new resource for patrons to navigate some of these issues and to share feedback directly with the state if they were interested about this significant wait time that is happening. It's unprecedented, the amount of passports that the state is processing. And so there, so in because of that, we get a lot of questions. So, um, just wanted to share that feedback. But um, our our passport service continues to excel. Um, you'll see next month's report. We will have exceeded a double, I think it is, double the budget for passports. If not double, then I think it's at least thirty thousand. Martha and Katie, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's that's correct. Um, also, just as a quick point of clarification with the passports. Um, it's not actually the state of Illinois. It's the federal government, um, the federal state department. Um, and.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Um, yeah, but just, but, um, to kind of, uh, compound the issues that we're seeing, it's literally everyone in the country that's having issues. And for people who are traveling, we had, uh, we had one instance with someone who needed to get get their passport. They had paid for expedited processing, um, and they were in danger of having to cancel their travel. So they tried to make an appointment at a regional agency, and literally the only appointments available were either in Hawaii or Puerto Rico. Like every other appointment slot at every other regional agency in the country was taken. So, um, yeah, it's, it's if, yeah, lot, a lot of, they've, yeah, thirty to forty percent increase in passports that the state department is handling, um, and very, very little that the passport agents can do. So we're like Renee said, just trying to be brutally honest with just about everyone who's going to be traveling this summer about what we're seeing.
Yeah, and Brad Schneider is our federal congressman, and his newsletter that's comes out quite frequently discouraged, but provided, um, you know, a possible avenue for really emergency. You know, quick processing, but even he said he, that's something he couldn't even guarantee right now. So we kind of, everybody has to kind of wait it out, but it is going out of the country.
Yeah, and I can, I can tell you right now on an expedited there, if they've, um, was Secretary Department, which, whichever department issues the passports, it's a federal state department, yep. Is guiding to seven to nine weeks on expedited and ten to thirteen on, um, regular application. They do have a link that will take you to, um, an emergency process. What I've heard is that is not fruitful as well. Anecdotally, I know people who had to cancel travel plans because of the unexpected delays for ones they had filed for at the end of two thousand twenty-two. So it is a quagmire, but it is not our problem, and it's certainly not our employees' problem. So I I I hope that, you know, that messaging comes across and that our, you know, our patrons are respectful of that.
It does, Matt. Yeah, I would say to, um, staff have been magnanimous in receiving the frustration of the situation, right? And giving as much information as possible. Um, and, you know, navigating these, you know, very personal and oftentimes frustrations that community members are going through. And I think staff do an above and beyond job negotiating those conversations. So I just really commend them.
Um, yeah, just a quick note. I mean, like Renee said, we've, we're fielding these types of calls all the time, but, um, the patrons that I've talked to have just been falling over themselves to thank us for all the information that we are providing, that that we're taking the time to talk to them. They they can tell that we empathize with them about having to cancel their travel and just being, you know, I am so sorry. I tell, I tell every applicant that's traveling in the next three or four months. I'm like, I'll keep all my fingers and toes crossed for you. But, uh, no, they've, they've all been, um, very understanding. I had one person just tell me that she just really appreciated, um, you know, just my, just me kind of, you know, just listening and just, you know, saying, hey, I understand. It's a hot mess over there. Um, but no, our patrons have been, have been really spectacular with the passport applications overall.
That would be a quick technical question for my own benefit. My passport expires June twenty-four. Do you guys process renewals?
Um, you'll want to, um, Kathy, you'll probably, yeah, you'll, you'll be eligible to renew by mail, um, in which case we can provide the forms and you know, give you a quick overview of what to do, but ultimately you'll, um, be responsible for either mailing it in or renewing online if that service is, uh, up and running again by the time you choose to do so.
Is it, what is the? Is it?
Six months is the current is, yeah, if it expired within the last six months, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep.
December. Thank you.
So right now you can't travel before October eighteenth, and who knows if that changes? If it expired today.
No, no, it expired, Nick, June, June twenty-four.
Okay.
Of twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Oh, you've got, yeah. Well, hopefully things don't get worse. Plenty of time.
Your neighborhood friendly library staff Kathy will help you with any questions you have as you navigate that. Just let us know, um, if we can help. And again, just really kudos to staff for navigating such difficult conversations. You know, people are visiting families or trying to go on vacation where they've got a lot of money booked. You know, I it's, it's hard and staff have done. I've listened and observed just really excellent customer service as always that we provide to the community. So thank you all. Really quick before I round out my portion of the presentation or director's report. You may have seen, uh, the statistics look a little different this month. Um, what I've done is revise the viewing of it so that, um, all of the data is removed and we only have the graph and the visuals. Um, it's a lot cleaner, and I think it makes it through, makes it a lot easier to read. Um, so a couple of trends that I wanted to showcase here for you in our statistical reports. Um, just like I saw, I said last month, our circulation trends continue to be steady. And as I mentioned, we have returned to pre-pandemic circulation rates, um, which is fantastic. And really, uh, great to see our library, uh, being utilized, uh, again in such great ways.
You know, let me comment there quickly. So one thing I would observe in this is the the March, the March twenty-twenty-three is that as near or at our all-time high, which typically occurs in like June. So, yeah, so if we're looking at May and June, we probably, you know, want to make sure we're assessing up to twenty-five hundred circulation totals across our, you know, distribute our modalities, if you want to call it that.
Uh, what I was gonna say, Matt, and I appreciate you mentioning this, is that you will continue to see enhancements in our reporting features. Um, we're making incremental changes month to month and reassessing and redistributing responsibilities. So Martha, Katie, and I will be looking at our statistical reports with Jill and Eliza. And so I agree with you. I mean, look at this. It's just, it's really incredible. And I think it will definitely increase this summer, um, as will our visit counts. Along with other things that we typically see during summer usage being the most popular time of a library. So thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. Um, another trend that we are noticing, and this isn't uncommon for libraries right now nationally even. Um, my former library, Dakota County, experienced this while circulation has returned to, um, pre-pandemic levels or even beyond, visit count isn't quite there. And so what I'm really proud about is that our visit count is pretty steady and has been for over a year, um, in terms of the actual people that are coming into our libraries. But as you can see, we're not quite, um, at our highest, but even last summer, two summers ago, excuse me, we had just an immense amount of, um, visits, and I think that was pre-Delta. And people were just excited to be out in community again. Um, I'm really anticipating a similar trend this summer as well. But, you know, there are a variety of ways that we're looking and getting out into the community to to invite people back to the library. Um, but people have a lot of options, whether it's, you know, the Park District or other recreational opportunities in the community. And I think there is a significant population here in Lake Bluff of older adults that just may not feel as comfortable, um, coming into a library in a public place. So it may not have returned to the same pre-pandemic numbers. So we'll continue to evaluate that and look to see how we can continue to welcome people back into our buildings.
But isn't our digital circulation up considerably?
Kathy, that's a great segue. Um.
Coming in as much because they're really comfortable with the digital programming or.
I think there's so many reasons, right? There are so many factors here. Digital circulation is definitely one of them. What I wanted to say here is that we are returned to the number of programs that we used to do pre-pandemic. Um, and our biggest time for programming is over the summer, and so you will see us return to these numbers again. Um, so kudos to staff. Um, and here is where you see that digital circulation, which I was going to highlight. So thank you, Kathy. It is continues to increase. Um, so the way that people are engaging with libraries continues to change. So we are really at kind of a a transition in public libraries, I think, in evaluating how people use the library. The pandemic had a huge impact. Um, so these are just some trends I'm noticing and as I'm getting to know the community. You know, we use a lot of our per capita grant to purchase, um, ebooks and audiobooks to address the demand. The hold list is very long. And so we will continue to see these numbers. I mean, this is the highest it's been ever. Um, so yes, I agree. I think people are just using the library differently to suit their own needs. So those are the highlights of the statistics that I wanted to cover. Are there any other questions with the director's report that I can answer tonight? All right, moving on. I'm going to share my screen again and pull up the financial reports. One second here. Here we go. Zooming out. But Tina was here. But Tina was here at the library today trying to fix whatever's going on with my BSNA account. She couldn't even figure it out. So thank you to Martha for running these monthly reports the last couple of months in BSNA. And I hope to be able to have access soon. So thank you, Martha. Okay, so the first report that I have for you here to review is the revenue and expenditures reports. I only have a couple of things I want to highlight for this. The first being we have received a hundred percent of our property tax revenue for the year. And in, in that, we've even received a few, a few more. I anticipate will potentially go beyond our budgeted tax revenue, but only by a couple of percentages points by the end of this month. A couple of things I do want to highlight here too. We have budgeted our ten thousand plus dollars from the Village of Lake Bluff contribution. I already talked to Bettina about this and this typically is dispersed to the library at the end of the fiscal year. So I haven't forgotten about this revenue stream or this line item, and we will be receiving that ten thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars from the village before the year is out. All right, the other thing that I wanted to mention here too, and where are you passports here? This is the number that I was referring to in terms of what's budgeted. We are aiming to receive nearly thirty thousand dollars by the end of April, which we've already hit that mark by today, just not by the time that we ran this report, which is double our budgeted amount for the year for that revenue stream. So just wanted to highlight that for you all.
Where do we stand with the breakout of the postage for passports?
We're making all of our budget category and line item changes in the new fiscal year. So next month in May, you'll see the end of the fiscal year through end of, end of April. So that'll be the last time this expenditure report looks like this. And then the first time you see the May report, it'll have all of those new budget lines. We thought it would be easier to make all the changes. There are actually several changes we need to make in, in all the reporting. So that it, it starts from a new fiscal year and goes onward.
Okay, I think that'll be increasingly important as they try to clean up this backlog because everyone's gonna file expedited and pay the additional thirty-five dollars.
I agree. And what you'll see is both the postage as well as the passport supplies. So we are actually going to be adding two separate line items in the expenditure list. And then one extra line item in the revenue list for the, the post, from the expedited postage.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to expenditures. We are, as I've mentioned, under budget for, sorry, I'll just scroll up a little bit here. We are, we continue to be under budget for staff salaries and that's a lot of the reason why the proposal was shared this particular year for the staff recognition proposal because there was funding to be able to make that happen. So I just again want to say thank you to the board for your support of that proposal. I've received a lot of thank yous from staff already about this. Everything else is pretty, it's, it's my first year, so it's pretty typical in terms of spending. What I do want to mention are just some things that you already know. For example, furnishings, where are you furnishings? You are, it's incredibly overspent, but we knew that going into this meeting. It's, here's the line item here. I'm just pointing it out. We are four hundred and twenty-three percent overspent in library furnishings. We knew that and we expected that and we off, we balanced that with not utilizing any funds for the exterior building improvements. There, there wasn't enough time either to prioritize that with other building projects. In terms of other spending, I'm really working with the managers to identify, you know, trends and spending for book collections. You'll notice that aside from the library automation software and the patron staff software, this entire section, what's going on with my screen? For the collections, we're only about eighty percent spent in our collections. That is not a percentage I'd like in future years. If we're going to budget this much for print collection and other collections, I'd like us to spend it. But the reasons we've talked about it with, at the manager level and at the finance level, the year or the eight months of not having a director significantly impact staff ability to order materials for the library. And so in that is a savings for the library as well. But going forward, we'll be sure to budget accurately and spend that budget each fiscal year. I, lastly, and I mentioned this in that joint HR finance committee meeting. I'm anticipating that we'll be able to increase the budgeted amount to the reserve at least at least to twenty-five thousand because of all, all of this. So I'm really confident in our financial standing and happy to answer any questions. Any questions about the revenue and expenditure report? Okay, the balance sheet is as expected as well. I'm just gonna scroll down here for you all. You can see this here specifically, we are due to receive more from the village as well. So at this time, if there are no other questions, I'd be happy to take a motion to approve the detailed balance and revenue and expense report for the library.
Can I ask one question? The do from the village, why are those numbers so significant?
Where's that?
The amounts due from the village on the balance sheet?
So ten thousand, I know, where did I see it? Sorry. First page of the balance sheet?
Yes, third section.
Here. Yes, so, I mean, that's a good question. The other piece of this is that it could be, I mean, it's the, the, the lay contribution, which we already received. But it is, the majority of that should be just the annual contribution, which we budgeted at ten thousand. I'll ask about this. Frankly, I don't know. I will ask Bettina. I don't know if I mentioned last time, but their financial, one of their payroll full timers left the position. So Bettina now is taking on that work too. And they just filled Glenn's position, the assistant to the administrator. So she was doing that work too. So she's been amazingly helpful given her, her workload.
Yeah, my observation is just, it's really that significant. I don't believe we're accurately reflecting it on, on above. So it could be one of two things, could be a bad number, or it could be a big number that I'm glad we're owed that money, but I don't like to see them in that much of arrears.
No, definitely not. What we budgeted for receiving, and, and this is partially my naivete, being new to this process. Martha, Katie, do you have any background or information on the annual, the annual contribution from the village, if there's other funds or revenue that we're missing beyond this village that would answer Matt's question?
I don't think so. I mean, I know that there are some bills that like they pay and then we reimburse them. And like, that's, that's the only thing I could possibly think it was, was that like, we had paid something that they reimbursed us. But I, that's not typical. So I, I'm not sure what that is, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't have any, I don't have any useful insight here.
Are you asking the purpose of the ten thousand or are you looking at the other?
I'm looking at what's outstanding from the village, yeah.
Yeah. I will reach out to her tomorrow and see if I can get to the bottom of this. You know, I mean, either option, as you pointed out, Matt, isn't great. If it's wrong, why is it wrong? It shouldn't be wrong. If it's correct, why are we so much in the rears in not receiving that?
Well, I think either way, it's, it's a boon for us. If we're wrong and we need to take the number up, great, you know, so we'll, you know, obviously get to hear it next time we get it right. And then if it's so much in arrears, then the village owes us more than we expect, but now they need to, they need to make whole.
Absolutely. This is my first time ending a fiscal year too. I've already been asking about a couple of questions to Lorenz and Martha about drilling into some of these end of year, like tying up those loops. So this is another one. Thanks for bringing it up. I can also look into last year's financials and last year's board packets to see if there's anything indicating there, even anything similar that would answer.
Yeah, and I have access to at least last year's. I'm just at a different computer right now. Back you up in the interim, but that's, yeah, I would look at that as a starting point.
Yep, I'll do that.
You know, and one observation, maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but the the twenty thousand dollars that's left in the, I'm gonna call it the book budget. Understandably, because of all the goings on in the library the last six, seven months, if we weren't by, it sounds like we're talking about purchasing of book materials. If we weren't able to do that, then are we, are our patrons missing out on opportune publications and books that they would be expecting to find at our library? And if that's the case, is there a way to carry over certain funds so that that purchasing happens in the, in the near future? And I wouldn't want to not be with that with vital materials and have people going to other libraries to find them.
Yeah, I can start by answering that. So just to clarify the amount, the budget this year for book budget and the, it's, it's hard to see, but these last two lines really should be in a different category altogether, I think, cause it, cause there, it's not related to book budget. And it kind of offsets, this is my opinion, the way that it's categorized, library materials. This software should be in a separate category. Beyond that, what we budgeted for the year is this number one hundred and seventy-one, eight, five, zero. What we've spent up till the time that I ran this report, we still have one more month. I know staff are doing a lot of ordering now, this final month as their capacity continues to grow. As of March thirty-first, we spent one hundred and thirty-seven, nine hundred and six of this budget. So it's not just twenty thousand, it's a little more than that. But to your, to your question, anytime there's a patron request, most likely, if, if we have the space in the collection, we will purchase that. And I'm saying that too because of some research we did for that Trayvon hoax book, hoax book that staff, Martha and Katie and others mentioned to me. Also, the popular titles, staff continue to, to review our journals and purchase those. I would, I would also say that anytime there's a popular book and we have a lot of checkout staff are actively looking at that holds ratio. And if we're able to add more titles, we can do that. I think what you're noticing here is it's, it's a lot of, like, it's, it's some of the budgets are really underspent, but it, the budgets that I'm really concerned about in terms of the the print materials, those are higher spent than some of these other percentages. So for example, fifteen percent of the juvenile kits collection has been ordered and devices. But that's because the way that it, the amount of time that it takes to develop a kit is very homegrown. And staff really research all of the items that they can put in a kit to develop it. So that, I understand why that one wasn't, was underspent. Something like graphic novels, I know that it could be also staff capacity, but also the collection and the interest in the community. So I think this year has been a really great learning year. And also like, we've succeeded in doing a lot of things by just keeping the building open. And I'm looking forward to getting staff on a, on a regular schedule to order and make sure we're looking at the budget and trimming the fat if we don't need it, right? I think we, the amount of inter, the last thing I'll say is the amount of engagement staff have had with me in terms of the budgeting process in the first four months that I've been here is more than they are typically used to having. So it's more, it's a lot more of a conversation. I'm really leaning in on their recommendations and trying to forecast for future. So I'm looking forward to continued process improvements in that area. Yeah. Any other questions or do I have a motion to approve the balance and revenue expense reports?
A motion to approve the balance and revenue expense report.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, so this is gonna be a roll call vote. I'm gonna start with Tracy Heitzelman. Tracy Meyerhoff?
Hi.
Trustee Zoudi?
Hi.
Trustee Church?
Hi.
Trustee Graziano?
Hi.
And with that, the motion passes and the March two thousand twenty-three financial reports have been approved. Thank you all. We're gonna move on just to the checks here. Next item in the packet. Um, Kathy and Bill were able to come in and sign checks for us this month. And I continue to be happy in the size of the folder that they are receiving. It continues to be small. There have been some really fantastic process improvements from Lorenz and other staff to really just look at where can we utilize the credit card? Where, where do we need to utilize checks? Where can we lean on vendor improvements? And, you know, when needed, do we use a purchase order? So from this list is the list of March two thousand twenty-three checks for your review. Happy to answer any questions. If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I will motion to approve checks one, five, five, six, two. Two, checks one, five, five, seven, eight.
Thank you, Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All right.
I have a tangential question related to this. So you mentioned we're putting more on our, our credit card, which sounds like good judgment, provided we pay it off. What, how, how significant a number has that gotten to just ballpark monthly?
Oh, well, um, I mean, one big change isn't credit card, but it's the Amazon business account that we made. I know we talked about that last month. Lorenz and I are still evaluating which ones, which vendors we can move to credit cards. So for example, we have an off-site rental facility that we've been writing checks to monthly. That's housing some of our documents, which we hope in the near future, we don't have to house anymore. We can have them on site. So that is several hundred. There was another check. I mean, I would estimate probably a couple thousand, but at this point, we're still looking at each individual vendor to see, will they allow credit card? Do they allow us to save the credit card and auto pay each month? Everyone has been a little bit different. Oh, that's so nice.
Yeah, isn't it? I get service, room service, right?
Renee, the website was one, the
Thank you.
Net to community.
And can you remind me about, on average, how much that is?
It depends, but it can be as much as like fifteen hundred per invoice. It depends, but it can be as much as like 1,500 per invoice.
Okay. I know I've heard Kathy talk a lot about check fraud. So I think anytime that we can move to credit card payment is gonna, it's gonna be better for the library.
Yeah, I think if it gets over a number like 10,000, then maybe we start to look at what benefits are associated with the card and whether we could use those to fund other sources or if we're getting the the highest cash back and just apply that to a statement credit.
I totally agree. I was, I talked to Renee about that a month or so ago, finding the card that gives us the best uh feedback on what the money that we're spending. So
Yep.
The more the merrier.
Thank you.
They charge a lot for those interchange fees and clearing. At least to the retailers.
Yeah. Thanks. Any other questions? Happy to answer from the check dispersment report. All right, with that, do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the March 2023 monthly check dispersment?
Already got the motion in the second, we just
This was the discussion.
This was tangential, yeah.
All right. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and do roll call. Thank you. My brain is outside of my head today.
That's good.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Hi.
All right, with that, the March 2023 check dispersment report is approved. Thank you all very much. All right, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and we will move on to committee reports of which there are two. Um, the finance committee met twice and we had one, one of those meetings was combined with human resources. So Matt, should I? Matt or Kathy, would either one of you like to report in Bill's stead?
I was
Kathy, yeah.
I wasn't there. So that leaves Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, can you, can you cover for me here? I don't have my, I keep everything in one note and I'm on a different laptop. Or I can get the other one that just I need to be offline for a few minutes.
Yeah, how about this? I'll pull it up. Um, you mean the the minutes?
Yeah, I just don't have my notes in front of me and I always reference back to those in my
Absolutely. Let me pull them up for you. Happy to do that.
Well, I have the minutes here, so if it sorry, folks.
So there was the March 7th meeting.
Yeah, are the minutes in our packet? Not seeing them.
Not for committees, no.
Okay, all right.
But I can share it right now.
Yeah, would you mind?
Absolutely. Or I mean, I wouldn't mind. That's what I'm trying to say.
I got you. I'm with you. You have a lot to orchestrate here. I get it.
I will tell you something I'm prioritizing for the next budget year is a second monitor. Um, it's amazing what having two monitors can do to improve efficiency.
Get a nice big one so you can put two panels of whatever you're working on and reconciliation, things like that. It makes things a lot faster.
That's great to know. Thank you. All right. So here we go.
All right. So this is going way. Okay. So we're going all the way back to March 23rd.
Right, there were two meetings. There was the March 7th.
Yeah, so I guess the highlights here, we covered the, we covered the insurance. We had, remember several adjustments to, we talked about this previously, several adjustments to insurance that will now capture in our, in our budgets. Um, the the fundamental issue there is we get, is it's, what's it called? I think I listed it here. We get like a template or something, a template number. Yeah, exactly. We get a template number from the insurance providers that had not been updated regularly. We now have a process to make sure that's input and that an estimate of our premiums are consistent with what is input there for the out year on the budget, the second year on the budget, we assume a 10% grows up. Um, and that keeps us pretty safe and for family changes and allows us for add to staff. We changed the premium expenses for the director. We increased those levels uh that to 10%. You can read here as fast as I can read it to you. Yeah, I think that's the highlight there.
Okay.
And then the last meeting was, yeah, so these are all the subsequent changes we made to, so the IMRF is to accommodate the um retirement pension changes. Those were also sort of shifting sands with with the change in director and uh changes in staff. We decreased our staff salary slightly. Um, increased librarian salaries slightly. They were offsetting amounts largely. Um, there were some other smaller changes across the board here. But yeah, that I can read them to you or you can read them. What would be most helpful?
Well, the, oh, go ahead. Someone was saying something.
No, I was just saying I I I'm perfectly happy to read them.
Okay.
I apologize. I usually have more context because I've got notes in front of me, so I'm just reading, reading as fast as you are for for frame of reference. Anything else? That I missed there, Renee?
The only thing I was just gonna say were that was the, those were the last changes to the budget that we made. And then at the March board meeting, we approved the March, we we approved the fiscal year 2324 budget. So that meeting was the March 7th meeting and then at last board meeting, as you all heard. Um, for those of you that were in attendance, we approved the budget. And so that went to the village and that is being included in Bettina's presentation for the budget tomorrow night at the village board meeting. And then the other meeting was the combined of HR and Matt. Um, so Jenny and Janie, you were here for the HR combined meeting.
I I was not at that one.
Oh, thank you. This was, that was grandchild day. Um, yes.
We had congratulations. Right?
It was Bonnie and Matt and Bonnie was wearing the hat of Kathy. Um, you all are such great collaborators. I have um, so Jenny, do you want to provide an update about the HR? Combined HR finance committee for the board?
The finance and HR met on April 6th. And we met to discuss and approve the stack recognition proposal from Renee. And great news, it was approved by everyone.
Yes.
As Renee, from the finance perspective, as Renee shared earlier, this was allocated from existing revenue amounts and and accommodated for within our existing budget.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for the committee? Updates? All right, with that, I will review really quickly some message here. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is old business. And what I'd like to do is before I share the screen for the next item, I want to just provide a brief overview for those of you that were not at the last month's board meeting. Um, we did have a member of the public uh address the board during public comment. And this person expressed concerned, concerns about our adult nonfiction title Trayvon Hoax by Joel Gilbert. Um, this was at the last board meeting on Tuesday, March 21st. Um, I do want to acknowledge I have an excellent report here from Martha. Um, and so I'm going to share those updates with you all to let you all know and to the public to know um what staff have done regarding this. So with that, I'll just share this presentation. Um, so following the board meeting, the book was examined by both Martha O'Hara and Carol Carter. Carol is a part-time staff member who orders for all of the adult nonfiction. Um, we found that the title was purchased in 2019, but it had not circulated since January of 2020. Um, and it had only been circulated twice in the whole time that the library owned the title. So without even looking at the quality of the content um or addressing the variety of pieces of feedback, the patron um uh shared about the title, looking at circulation alone. Um, it was, uh, the decision was made, excuse me, I skipped a sentence. Um, based on circulation alone, um, this title was and would have been a candidate for de-selection because of its low circulation. Um, so on, um, because after discussion with myself, Martha, Martha and Carol, the decision was made to weed the title based on that criteria, based on the circulation. Um, there are additional concerns that staff raised with the title. After they were given a chance to really evaluate it, um, we recognize that there are opportunities for policy improvement, our collection development policy specifically, um, because we do not address misinformation or uh conspiracy writings in that collection development policy. And this title was specifically written uh in the author note, they identified the author as a conspiracy theorist. And in the last five to 10 years of misinformation um and also an effort to represent our community more diversely and inclusively, it definitely, uh, the responsibility is on us as library staff to make sure that our collection is the most up to date, um, the most accurate, the most well researched and that it supports our community need. Um, the circulation alone was enough information for us to determine that this book no longer supplied or supported a community need. Um, but it really provided a lot of great conversations between me and Martha and Martha and Carol, the collection development uh manager for this collection that and these continue, these conversations will continue. I think I mentioned this last month. Or or I don't know where I mentioned this. I think libraries, collections are receiving uh an amount of scrutiny that is unparalleled to recent years. Um, and that requires us to have the most up-to-date collection development policy we can. Ours has not been up to date in several years and it requires some work. Um, and so in that, I think there's the policy and then there's the procedures. We really have some work to hone in on what staff themselves are doing in each of their collections to um to manage that collection. Do we have written procedures so that if a member of the public asks us, how do you cultivate the nonfiction collection? Um, we can answer that um without, you know, because policy is board approved, but our staff procedures should indicate, um, you know, how we curate each individual collection. So this was a really oh, yeah, I was just gonna wrap up. Thanks, John.
Forgive my naivete. Is there, I assume there's an organization like the American Library Association? Right?
Yes.
Do they, do they promulgate sample policies?
Yes.
Libraries to adopt? And if so, are we in? How do we compare to the, you know?
Well, I I can even show you our policy if you'd like. Um, and the truth is, is that it's out of date. Um, our collection development policy, uh, even in just the the area of misinformation, conspiracy writing, we don't address those topics specifically. Um, there are other resources such as the the Rails Consortium. They have uploaded collection development policies from other libraries. Um, and now, I mean, remember going back to our discussion about the per capita grant book? They recommend policy review almost annually and something like collection development especially. Um, and so it's it's out of date. It it needs attention. And that's something that if we can prioritize it in the next fiscal year, I'd like to. Um, we have a whole host of other policies that we need to prioritize too with the work of the special topics committee, the computer policy, the personnel policy. But um, that's why policy work is so important. Um, it needs to be regular so that we can have these important pieces in terms of our governance in place so that when patrons ask a question, um, we're not scrambling to make updates.
So which committee would have purview over policy?
Right, so the bylaws and policy committee. And so what we're going to do in the new fiscal year um is move that instead of a um an ad hoc committee, we're going to have that. I'm going to make a recommendation to the board to have that be a standing committee um so that we would get on a rotation of annual review of policies um throughout, you know, the future of the library.
The bylaws committee is not an ad hoc committee. It's a standing committee.
That may be on the website. It's different. Okay, sorry about that. I misspoke.
It just doesn't meet very often, but
It doesn't meet very often, right? Yeah.
I think, yeah, I, that was what I was told. I can always change it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. Then it's not ad hoc. Great. So, um, if, yeah, it sounds like previous information staff were told it was ad hoc. We'll change that. So even better, we have a mechanism in place for record, uh, regular policy meetings so that we can get this get our policies in order.
Yeah, because as I recall the conversation, the patron last month, his, his real question was, why was this selected in the first place?
Right.
And so
I can answer that too.
No, that's okay. But I'm, I mean, we all heard that. So so we don't hear that again. It sounds like we're going in the right direction with policy review and having a position, uh, which it sounds like I think we would want to support that, so.
Correct. Yes. And you know, that's where that internal staff procedure balances the policy. You know, if, you know, for example, we need to do legacy planning. That's a clear goal and expectation for all the managers to have documentation for if and when staff were to move on or retire or what have you. We need to have that, those procedures in place so that the new person can understand the job and how it's done. We don't have those documents in terms of collection development at this time.
Could I be added as a um as a standard member to the bylaws planning committee?
We will be um electing officers next month and then eventually committees the following month.
No, you do, you do that in May also.
I, the calendar that I had was different.
No, you do, everything's done in May. The uh the elect the officers and then committees. Because you have two trustees. So otherwise you'd have vacancies on committees. So it's always done in May.
Okay.
Renee, it might be that the committees um select their their heads. Um, and then that's reported back in June.
That's right. The committees are expected to then meet before the June meeting, select a chairperson and review goals.
Thank you. The documentation I'm working off of from Eric is different, so I'm glad to have the information. Great.
I think the important thing here, if we do have any titles that become a a lightning point or flashpoint that, like John said, it's it's the method of acquisition. If it was, in this case, the, you know, patron request and then the, you know, how, why it was removed, that covers us on both ends. How did it get on ourselves? Why did it come off of ourselves? It came off because there, it wasn't circulating and we have, you know, we need to serve our community. Um, I think that's important if we have any other situations like this that are are, you know, problematic. Um, I think it's, you know, this bylaw planning committee is imperative. Um, and just as libraries have become more and more of an ideological battleground, um, we want to remain above the fray, especially with a metro stop right down the street. We don't need a bunch of out-of-towners coming in to plant their flag.
And I just want to clarify something. Staff have procedures for managing their collections. It's just not written down anywhere. So when it comes to, it's not that they don't have them. So they do a fantastic job with their collection development. Um, it's just that kind of more formalizing where I can go and see, okay, what is that procedure? What are the criteria and what resources do they use and all of that? So, but to your point, Matt, I completely agree. So that is the um, the old business update. Any further questions or comments? Um, I will be following up with a link to this recording after it's posted to the patron resident comment who came, um, just as FYI, just to say, you know, again, we appreciated your comment. If you're interested in further discussion and what the library has done, um, they will be receiving an email from me and a link to the video. Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is new business. Um, and first is trustee Graziano. Um, just a little background, trustee Graziano and I have been working hard at the director's job description, the director's evaluation, the director's evaluation timeline um and other things. Um, but this is a new item that she wished to present to the entire board um because it related to finance, it related to HR, it related to um policy. So So it made sense to me that this be brought to the full board while typically something like this would be brought first to committee and then to the board. But there were so many overlapping interests that I thought with talking to Jenny, it made sense to bring this to the board completely. So I'm, I'm going to pass it off to trustee Graziano.
Thanks, Renee. And I think also Renee thought tonight would be a good night to talk about it because Kathy and John, I think you would be able to give us some great feedback on what you think of this proposal for you step away from your position. So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the proposal to create a trustee recognition fund for Lake Bluff Library employees. I know from working with all of you closely that staff satisfaction and appreciation are extremely important to all of us on the board. I always am hearing everyone talk about how wonderful the staff is at the library and how much we appreciate all of their hard work. And especially with Renee coming on board, I think it's been so wonderful how she's elevated all the staff accomplishments, talking about them in the reports that we're hearing first from people. So this proposal though, was an attempt to formalize the board's staff appreciation efforts in a way that allows the director to respond quickly to Lake Bluff Library accomplishments through appreciation events. Funds raised through generous contributions from the trustees would be used at the director's discretion for refreshments at staff gatherings. I believe these events will offer staff opportunities for team building, reflection and celebration. In my own experience as a teacher for the Lake Bluff Park District preschool, it has been similar, at similar events where a meal has provided or a simple gesture of appreciation is given that the bonds of staff grow and a culture forms and advances. I understand that we have a budget line already for hospitality, but this year the budget line was overspent despite an increase. And I know I've learned in the past from our research as the HR committee by talking with other directors that directors really, and other libraries are hoping to keep all of their funds going towards, or most of their funds going towards staff salaries, library programs and materials. And so appreciate, they're getting very creative about how they're proposing these staff or running their staff appreciation programs. So the, one of the suggested contributions would be a hundred dollars. And I know from each trustee member once a year. And I know that during tightening economic times, the suggested contribution is no small amount. But I think the returns would be immeasurable for both our staff and for the public that we all serve. So I just wanted to bring this to commit, to all of you so that we could discuss it and see what you think about formalizing something like this.
Thank you, trustee Graziano. And just additional context. I, this was trustee Graziano's idea. It was brought to me, this doesn't, while it sounds like something I would fully support and it is, I did not have anything to do with the proposal. So this was completely from, I just want to provide that level of transparency. That this is completely from Jenny's idea.
Anything we can do to, to recognize the staff and thank them. Even in, if it's just in small incremental ways, I think is a positive. So I would fully support it. I'll give a hundred bucks on the way out. How's that?
That's so nice. Thanks, John.
Jenny, I was reading this over and I, I'm very impressed with the amount of thought that you put into this. I think this is a terrific proposal. And I'm very much in favor of, of doing what we can to recognize staff. I, I think our, our staff is really the, the thing that keeps our library cooking along. And we need to, we need to let them know how much we appreciate them.
Thank you. That's so, that's so nice. You know, I was so, I felt really blessed this year that the trustees at the Park District, they hosted two events and I thought it was just such a nice way to say thank you. And I know that I, so I really, when I thought about this, I thought that our board would just love to participate in something like this too. So I'm, I wasn't sure if this was to be the format that would work for everyone, but I'm so glad to hear that some people really feel what, they're like, it's a good fit.
Okay. I have to speak up, Jenny. I'm sorry to first.
Well, please do. We want everyone's feedback.
Yeah, I, you know, this has come up before in terms of discussion about staff, about trustees donating to foundations and friends and so forth. I'm all in favor of everybody supporting the library as much as we do, but I think that our service is sufficient in terms of our commitment unless one chooses to go beyond that. When we run for election, we all get petitions and we speak before a caucus group. And no one asks if we will be providing generous contributions. And that, so that's not a, an expectation of our service. Doesn't mean I don't agree with, if asked for donation, I would supply it, but I think to be, you know, we are elected officials for a purpose and nothing is stated about generous contribution. So I guess I would perhaps rephrase that funds may be provided.
Sure.
There should, I don't think there should be a stated expectation that isn't stated in one's choice to run for service.
I'll add to Kathy and Jenny putting this proposal together. I did some of my own research. I did some straw pulling of my various networks across the country of libraries. And there were some states, there are some states where public officials receive salaries. We have a law statute in Illinois that all public library trustees and public officials do not receive stipend or salaries. But for those that, those states that do, those libraries actually had something in place where they donated their salary to a fund like this. There were a couple Illinois libraries that I spoke to that had similar funds. Other people cited that the Friends was more of the organization that led the appreciation events and initiatives related. Our Friends of the Library here at Lake Bluff is sponsoring a luncheon for National Library Week, which starts next week. So staff are going, are very appreciative of that. And that they wanted to get back into an annual rotation of that. So just wanted to share that additional context with you all, if that could be helpful.
Yeah. And there was discussion when the foundation was established that there was a discussion that all trustees should now be required, be required to make donations to the foundation. And I raised the same objection as I am tonight. And I was also set, told that some libraries have trustees who automatically make generous donations. And different libraries, library districts select their trustees differently. Some are appointed and some are appointed by organ or committees or, you know, governmental bodies that, that discuss expectations of trustees. Elected trustees in Lake Bluff do not have those caveats. So I don't think we should, we, I don't think we can say something, they will do something when they're not told that when they're elected. So I just think that the language of a, you know, sort of, sort of, I don't, rather than a proposal and invitation, invitation to trustees or something, just so that it's clearly voluntary and there would be no repercussions or, you know, misunderstanding that someone chose not to participate.
Well, and I think I really appreciate your feedback Kathy, because I think we would never want anyone to feel that they had to, I mean, the, that they would have to participate in because for, people have different reasons for not being able to take part in something. And I thought that by setting up something that was a little bit more formal, that was directed towards Renee, would make it less awkward than trying to organize something on a personal level where someone might have to not, would, would, as a trustee, if I was reaching out to them personally or trying to organize something. I mean, we could do things independently, but I thought it was nice to try to do something in as a group. And of course, people would not have to participate. That would, I would never want anyone to feel like they were compelled to do something. Because I do agree that, you know, your service is a, is what you're, you were elected to.
Yeah. Then Jenny, I would just take that word will out of there because you're saying will be provided. That's, that's a.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's probably the biggest objection to that, that.
Oh, okay.
That's an expectation and we can't.
Right.
Can't make that expectation.
No, definitely not. But you think, you think other than the language there, the idea is, is, oh, okay. Or you, or you do.
I think it's a little more formal than I'm comfortable with, but I mean, I think that it could be, there, there are a lot of ways to accomplish that, but. I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm not going to be here to.
That might have been, that I'll just call myself out for that. I might've been the one using the word proposal because I was thinking, because Jenny and I were like, how does this move forward? Is this a discussion? How do we give the trustees the information that they need in advance so that they?
Let me just give you a suggestion that comes to mind. When there've been transitions on the board, when a director is left and so forth, there've been gifts collected and maybe one trustee says, or just says, look, I'm, if you want, if you're interested, you know, it's done behind closed doors with no, you know, there's a gift made, but it doesn't necessarily matter who contributed or didn't or whatever. So I think you could, again, the May meeting is a great time to do this. This is a tradition we'd like to start. If you're interested, you can, you know, put an envelope on Renee's desk or give something to Jenny. But it's, that's just my, it's just my opinion. I don't think you can tell two brand new trustees and everyone else that they have to do this.
No, definitely not. That, no. Yes, I agree.
And everything you've said about this Jenny, as you've explained it to me, it was always voluntary. So I think it's just, right? I mean, that was what your thoughts were.
Yes. The, I think just putting it through Renee was the way to make it the least awkward invitation so that people could give their contributions if they choose, chose to participate right to Renee. And then it would just become part of one, one, I don't know, I guess, pot of, of funds. So that she could choose to do with it on behalf of the board, on behalf of the entire board. What, and, and that's, it would all come right from the entire board.
Sounds good.
I kind of like the idea actually of it coming from the board because I, I always feel guilty about spending, even though I know there's a hospitality budget. I always feel guilty about turning in receipts for stuff I buy. I feel like it's taking money that could be used in other. And I, once again, I know there's a budget for it, but.
Well, and what you're bringing up, Janie, is actually an issue that I've talked to the other managers about. We don't have definitions for any of our budget lines. So when we say hospitality, are we talking about cookies and tea at a program? Are we talking about hosting Cal's family at a welcome event for the showroom? What do we mean by hospitality? We don't have a definition of that. And so I think because we don't have a definition of that, there has been some difficulties in trying to figure out how it's, how the money should be spent, who spends it, what's the priority and so forth. So that is actually, even when we go to our collections, we don't have clear definitions for each budget line. So that is a, a process improvement I'd like to make too, that could help scope. What is the function of this budget?
As far as the, the stro reception, I think I, we discussed that that is an expense that the foundation is covering.
Yeah, sorry. I was just giving that as an example, like, you know, what is hospitality? Is it, you know, the director's welcome event? Is it, and I was giving that example to show when it's not, right? So I was just trying to.
Yeah, this, this year it got kind of out of hand because we had so many things happening. So typically it's probably just, Janie, correct me if I'm wrong, probably in the past, it's only been like a holiday luncheon sort of.
Yeah.
I don't know what else we've done.
Maybe, maybe one other event that comes up for whatever reason, but yeah, typically it's a holiday luncheon. So there was a lot this year.
Yeah.
I mean, do you, oh yeah, I was just going to pass it off to you.
Oh, me? Renee, I was wondering if moving forward on this, if you might be able to like resend this to the board? And if people could email comments back to you regarding language or if they have other, if they have other suggestions and then we could kind of, and then we could go from there. Is that, I don't, or I'm not sure what other option we have regarding this tonight.
Yeah, I think that's very acceptable. I'd want you to receive feedback from everybody on the board. And I would want all board members to be aware, including those that can't be here or those that need additional time to reflect on other changes. And then it sounds like, then there's just moving to formalize it or de-formalize it, un-formalize it, creating the procedure of whatever it is that you want to do. Is it you as the head of HR committee creating a letter every year at the beginning of the year to the trustees? I don't know, or is it a, an item on an agenda? Is it, you know, is it an email? I, I think to Kathy's point, we don't have to formalize everything. I wanted to let you all know that I could track it. If you needed transparency on my level, you know, we could easily do that and I'm very happy to do that.
I wouldn't overly formalize it at all. I would just say, look, this is something we'd like to start. We have a, we talked it over. It's, we're thinking of a certain amount of money. It's voluntary. But if you're interested, please drop and then look for something with whomever's in charge. I mean, it's pretty much what, what we do all the time when someone's friends say, let's gather and do something. I mean, if somebody's not going to participate, it's not, it's, you know, it's not, it's, doesn't have to be publicized, but I just don't think it should be hard and fast, this is what they will do. I mean, we don't have any real will things that the trustees have to do. This is going to be the only one.
Yeah, I don't even have an attendance requirement really. You're all supposed to come, but I'm not counting.
You know, it seems a little, so I, it's just, I would just say, keep it pretty casual and, yeah, drop it off at Renee's.
Okay.
Any other feedback? I, I just want to say that on behalf of the staff, I'm thrilled to have seen something like this come to the table. And I'm very happy to hear such support for staff and their contributions. They hear from me all the time, how great they are. And so the work that they put forth is great. So I think this type of thing, I hope they are getting used to it. It's probably, I'm, I'm really happy. I'm really happy about it. So thank you all. Happy to support you Jenny with next steps.
Thank you.
Thanks Jenny. Thanks Jenny.
All right. Moving on to the last item in new business. I just want to thank Jill for putting together this fantastic list of trustee community engagement opportunities. We've talked about this in different ways, but we would love to have the board of trustee members come to different community events with us if you would like. I think it's a great opportunity for you all to interface with the residents, with your constituents. If you are so interested in any of these opportunities, please email me. It's a copy in your board packet. It's the last page. We will be attending a variety of summer events as we are scheduling right now. One of which is the Lake Bluff Auto Show, Artists on the Bluff. And of course, the Fourth of July Parade. And so if trustees are interested, you're welcome to email me. We'd love to have you. And I'm hoping that this list of engagement opportunities can be either a quarterly or bi-yearly thing for us where we put forth opportunities to the board and you can, if you're interested, join us and join staff at these community events. So this will be a semi-regular thing that we are offering to you.
Thank you. It's a really nice list.
Thanks. Thank you, Jill, for putting it together. I'm going to be at, I think, almost all of these. So looking forward to getting out in the community this summer. All right. With that, are there any other items of business that you would all like to present to the board?
I just wanted to point out that the special topics committee still exists. I worked on a draft of a, the full report, which I'm calling Phase One, because there's actually quite a bit more to do. So I sent it to Renee and the other members of the committee. Renee, I think we'll be setting up a meeting before the next board meeting of the committee, at which basically Phase Two additional activities and goal, our, is our goals, we'll set new goals if necessary. Go on from there. So that's happening with that.
Thank you Kathy, and thank you for your leadership on that committee as well during a really interesting time in our library history. I think it was very well handled and I'm excited to share the community report with the community.
I did have one question I wanted to ask. Is there any update on the stro room opening?
I shared this with Kathy just a few days ago, and one of the interesting things I'm navigating is working with Mark and his relationship with his family. Because of this, what happened this spring, I've had a lot of fits and starts with being able to identify a date or a couple of dates. There was a family illness with both of, I don't want to share too much. I continue to receive messages of needing to delay a decision on picking the date from the family. And so one of the options that Kathy and I talked about was just having a celebration for the library and moving forward with it, since it's almost a year since Cal's passing. And we do need to formally celebrate and recognize the stro room in our communication. We need to recognize the Friends, the Foundation and so forth. And then in addition to that, if and when the stro family are able to come together, we could host another smaller celebration for their family, kind of a more intimate gathering. So that is, as of just a couple of days ago, Kathy and I were talking about how to navigate this. Because I think from a library standpoint, we need to prioritize communicating about this. And we need to move forward. And then we also want to be incredibly understanding and supportive of any situation that comes up from the family standpoint too. So Kathy, anything else to add to Janie's question?
No, thanks for summarizing that. I just think, you know, that well, as I said to, to Renee, the, of the four stro children, I know Mark lives in, in Michigan, Elizabeth lives in, in Houston, there's a son, I guess it's Greg in Minneapolis, and I don't know where the fourth lives. So they're all over the place. They have families, they, they're grandchildren. And perhaps orchestrating a get together is more difficult than they thought. This sort of came about at Cal's memorial this summer, when everyone was together and they thought that that would be appropriate. So if it's not meant to be, it's not, and we're not going to force it on them. But at the same time, as, as Renee says, we have this beautiful room, it's being used, people are complimenting us on it. But there's been no announcement and it's also, it's an example of local philanthropy, which is important that we, you know, broadcast to, to the community and, and celebrate. So I think it's time to get it open, get them, get the news out there, get excited about it. And I think Cal would want that. And when her family can get together, or even if it's just individually, if they're in town, they want to come visit the room. We'll certainly show it to them, but I think that's probably the best way to proceed.
Sure. We can always send them the video.
Of course.
Janie, any thoughts? Pro, Daniel?
Well, I, I hadn't come to that conclusion yet, but I have to say, it, it, I, I've been worried that it's been taking so long and I had a feeling it was due to the, you know, the illnesses and issues that you have both enumerated here. But I, I would agree. I think it's time to, to have a, a public opening for this. And, and then just go from there. And I, i- if any of them are in town and want to come in, certainly, you know, I would be more than happy. I'm sure Kathy would, I'm sure John would, any, any of the current board members would be happy to come up and, and greet them and express our thanks and, once again, our condolences and, and give them a nice tour.
Yeah.
We have our weekly communication meetings, Martha, Jill and I, and so I just wrote down, let's talk about this now, now that it seems like a decision has been made, let's talk about what our communication plan is now. And I just have to la Jill for her various video abilities. We could use a really nice short introductory video to promote the space. Maybe do an interview, I don't know, with, you know, you Kathy or whoever. And certainly press release all the, all nine yards.
You know, that being said, would it be possible to have Mark and any other of the family members that desired put together a little video snippet that they could share?
That's kind of where I was going with it. Yeah, because Mark seems to be more local. Maybe he could be interviewed for something like that. I think that would be a really wonderful promotional item, but also a commemorative item to memorialize the impact of Cal, Cal's legacy and the, the space that was created. Yeah, let's talk about it. We'll get a communication plan together and I'll share updates with, with you all.
Good. You know, one other thing that I, I just, it just popped into my mind right now is I, I know there were, there were family pictures and so forth at Cal's service at St. Mary's. I, I just wonder if there's a, a good photo that we could frame and put.
Actually, Mark is interested in a plaque. I told Kathy this. He has plaque building abilities and he are, he and I had a really great conversation in the room. And I learned all about his skills. And so he was talking about creating a commemorative plaque with a photo of her.
I think that would be wonderful.
He had one in mind when he was talking to me. So I mean, I think we're all on the same page there.
That'd be great.
So I can have him move that along. I don't know what has, his timeline is as an artist, you never know. But like, we could certainly make sure that a photo is even temporarily in the space.
What about the plaque commemor, thanking the Friends? That's way overdue as well.
Yeah, it, it really is Kathy, so I haven't been able to prioritize that yet. But it, it, I, I kind of was waiting to see what all this was, where all this was going, so it needs to happen. So Jill has a plaque person, she got the contact information, so I haven't done nothing on it, so it needs to.
I'm not, but I mean, it's time that we do, get it up, get it done. We just set a deadline.
I think this is a great conversation tonight to.
I would have the friends take a look at it as an approval. I think they mentioned in the past they want to do that.
Yes.
Not to throw a monkey wrench in it, do we have any signage standards for the library?
I'm, I'm going to pass this off to Martha and Jill. We have some.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not sure we want to completely, you know, depart from what other, other signs look like, signage.
I mean, we're, we're consistent in that it's inconsistent.
Oh, okay.
We're kind of gradually trying to change that, but we, we, we don't have any, any kind of standard in the building.
We have a style guide, we have colors, we have branding, we do have a branding guide, John. So like, you know, when it comes to colors and font and things, we have that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, just so it doesn't look like, it doesn't belong.
Oh, for sure.
You're talking about the, the plaque or?
Yeah, the, the sign, the signage, the, the plaque.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, absolutely. That would be something I would negotiate with Mark too, because there's an element of wanting to support the creative freedom and it's his family and all of that, so wanting to.
Right, yeah. It's a delicate balance.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know Renee, one other thing that just popped into my mind and I apologize for keeping the meeting going longer than maybe we wanted, but putting up a banner for the Star Library. I mean, we still haven't done a lot with that either. And, and that's something else that I, I think that we need to, that's, it's almost old news now, but I.
So we were, we were looking at the kind of the whole year of celebrating. The Friends of the Library just met on Saturday unbeknownst to me. So I missed an opportunity to give them the yard sign, so I'll be doing that in July. Jill and I have already talked about the banner and we need the, we need to have the museum meeting first. So the museum needs to take their portrait down. But we already have the cost dedicated to our marketing budget for 2023, 24. Figured out. Jill, anything to add with that? I mean, it's a beautiful design.
Just because we were waiting for after May 1 with the new fiscal year, because we've overspent the marketing budget currently because of the other wonderful opportunities that we have created for the Star Library, so.
That too. Thank you for reminding to your comment, Janie, yes. What I mentioned to somebody the other day is, we are in no way going to ever not have work to do. There will always be work to do, and such is the work of public service. And we really appreciate being able to, I like the opportunity of being able to have such a, a day that's so various, going from a board meeting to a design meeting to all of that. So it has been an adjustment for me as director to keep up pace with everything going on. There's a lot more to do. So thank you all for your graciousness and my onboarding process and getting things done.
Which is a last little word about the, a banner, if, if we do end up ordering a banner, though that mural on the wall can come down at any time.
Right. Yeah.
Are you speaking, are you speaking on behalf of the, the museum? Is that just?
I am, yes.
So why don't we get it down? And then regardless, we don't have to wait for a banner to, why not make that happen?
Well, I guess, are we, are we meeting, is there going to be an intergovernmental meeting?
So I talked to Mark Dewar just the other day. He came by and I know I talked to Kathy about this too. Every doodle poll I've sent out, we haven't been able to find a common meeting date. And so it needs to, and Kathy O'Hara said, let's just wait until May. And she wanted to talk to me about the cleaning situation just in my office. I said, no, we need to wait for the meeting to talk about some of this stuff. So I really do need, want to get that meeting on the calendar with people's availability. It hasn't been able to happen. Like the last doodle poll, Kathy O'Hara said no to every single option. So I don't, it's, it's the hardest thing of this job is literally sometimes scheduling a meeting. I've said that for the last two jobs I've had. Just getting people together. So I'm hopeful May I can get a date on the calendar.
Ready.
All right, I will, you know, I will bring that up at the next meeting if we can, to see if we can just get it down.
Right.
See if they're willing to do that. I mean, it's our building, right?
Well, with that, they put up new flyers of banners on their side, took down the holiday one and put up new ones without. So we have to come up with a process of communication to request building changes. I see we're kind of, I mean, there's a million things we could talk about. Are there any other board updates that we want to share with the whole group before? With, with everyone here in discussion? Well, with that, I'd like to remind you all, Tuesday, May 18, no, May 16, 6:30 in the Swooth Room, please join us in person finally for a reception for John and Kathy. Our new trustees Sandy and Alex, Alexandra will be invited as well. I will invite a few community members as well, not, nothing too big, but just people that might want to give their regards and thanks. So I hope you will join us. And then our next board meeting is in person also, and it will start at seven. So I have some follow-up conversations with you all via email about, do you want printed board packets? Do you want to bring your laptops, your tablets, you know, so some situation, some details like that need to be firmed up now that we're meeting in person again, but I'll be able to do that via email with all of you. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Well, second.
Thank you so much. All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned of the meeting of the Lake Bluff Public Library Trustees, April 18th at 8:48. And that is the official last meeting of trustee Meyerhoff and trustee Heiselman. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Have a great night.